Implement the CARP plan and go with what you think is the most and most beneficial, and then tell us what you did. And I think, so I would support a more generic, but more specific action-oriented, action-based goal document.
Andy?
Yeah, I think that there's several things that I think about. One is, is we need to think about the number and complexity of the goals and make sure in our own minds that it's reasonable. Because we have some pretty complex goals and an awful lot of them. And is it fair to ask anybody to handle that number of complex goals? Which then gets into the next question is to whether there are, there's adequate staffing and resources available to do this, which I touched on a little bit in the evaluation I wrote, because I really am concerned that, you know, in the loss of Sean Banguano and several other senior staff people, including Brianna. It just seemed like we really have hit a point where it just may not be that we have resourced either in people or in funds to expect that those go, that that number of goals can get addressed, which then gets to my third and final thing, which is that we have to make sure that goals are doable. And to say that we want you to solve the problem of housing of middle-income people in Amherst to make that more doable. This isn't, you know, a local problem or statewide problem. This is a national problem. And how can you, what are we expecting? And is it reasonable again? So I think that those are the kinds of issues that I hope the GOL could all have done and fix about it for some steps.
So one of the things that I, besides the fact that I think there's way too many goals and there's too many subgoals, is how do we then look across the goals and say, what of this is reasonable? What do we really want to do? In other words, if we lined up everything mentioned in those goals, and then we were to say, okay, what is our, what are our individual priorities? How would that line up? And then how do we say, across all of this, what is truly reasonable to expect? So it's not just setting goals, it's saying, what are top priorities? What are we really, where do we want the town's resources to be spent? The second thing is to acknowledge and somehow identify within the goals, what are multi-year goals? And what could be accomplished in a year or a couple of years? And so that we don't get to the end of, you know, nine or 10 months and say, oh, well, that wasn't accomplished, when in fact, maybe it's not something that can be accomplished in that year for any number of reasons. So those are a couple of thoughts. I do want to remind councilors, particularly those of us that were on the first council, we actually used to rate the subgoals. And I, that was tedious, and then we decided we'd go to just rating the goal. And yet, all of us find that, you know, gee, goal, sub-goal one, yes, did well, sub-goal two, did well, no, didn't do sub-goal three, didn't do sub-goal four. So that creates yet another complexity as we look at these goals. Thank you. Jennifer?
Yeah, I just, I agree with you. We don't want to have, I think you counted, you said in GOL, there were like 90 tasks for the, you know, and that's crazy for, that we would ask that of our town manager. But there's, I think some areas where we have to be specific, and even at, you know, like Paul's request, because in 2021, we were talking about the waste, you know, hauler bylaw. And then, you know, Paul said, well, if we wanted, you know, staff time to be devoted to that, we should make that a goal. So there are some, and it is a multi-year goal, as is a community choice aggregation, which, you know, we have a real benchmark in February. I mean, that we're getting close to, that, that was never anticipated, certain things that will happen in a year, but may, perhaps because they're multi-year, then we have to specify them in the town manager goal, so, because they do need staff time devoted to that. So I think that's the balance. I don't think we want to just say, well, you know, I, I think we probably have to give more direction than asking the town manager just to choose what part of the CARP that, you know, staff is going to work on. We can do that to some extent, but again, something like community choice aggregation or waste hauler, where we were asked to specifically cite that as a goal, so that staff resources would be made available.
Anna?
I think, I'm curious about how to best, so what I'm, one of the things that I'm struck on is that, while some of us have been around longer than others in terms of our engagement on, on council and other, anyway, some of us have run around longer than others, it's 10:55. We don't know all of the complexities and the ins and outs of Paul's job. And he does an amazing job giving us a very thorough self-evaluation. But I'm really curious about the idea of if we made this a bit more of a joint process, where I'm stuck on my initial thought of having objectives and then more clear action steps. If we were to create those objectives as a council and then present them to Paul, who would pitch what he believes some of his action steps would be, and then we give feedback on those. Because I think that for us to come up with initial actions and deadlines for them and all of that doesn't necessarily take into account what is feasible. And Paul is the one who has a better grasp on that. So Paul, I'm curious about your thoughts on kind of a deeper engagement on that part of the process, specifically if we want to include specifics, which I think are helpful for all of us in terms of knowing kind of what, when done is done. But also recognizing that our help, our efforts are probably more beneficial in the overarching objectives.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of good points being made. I think that's a successful goals one in which the, you know, employee and the employer are sharing that, that goal, you, in you, you know, the typical SMART goals, you have the resources, or you identify the resources you need and all those things. I think the idea of the council saying, these are our five top things, here's the type of thing we want, and then having that be a dialogue, I think that's right, that would be a very powerful sort of unifying kind of conversation that happens. I think there's the document, the goal document usually tries to do two different things. One is it has its sort of policy goals, and it has the sort of, are you doing your job? Like, are you, you know, you know, doing all the things, you know, did you balance the budget type things, right? And, you know, I don't know, it's never going to be comprehensive, because we do a lot of different things, and then also new things come up during the course of the year, you know, COVID. So I think that, you know, I think we just have to decide what we want this document to be. You know, I think that the value, just so you know how I look at this, the value of this is really high to me, each of your individual comments, because I do read those, and I pay attention, I internalize those. Not everyone, but yeah, I try to do that. The, the summary thing that, that Lynn works on, or whoever's going to work on it, that's sort of an outward-facing document, because the, the content is here, the outward-facing document is more for the public to see. And I think that's, when I look at things, what I prepare for staff, it's like, it's going into your personnel file. So I do care about, they care what it, what it reads. And so I think that the purpose of the different documents can mean different things. So I think you need to be communicating to your constituents, your elected officials, on what you, what your evaluation of the manager is. I think in terms of like, by the actual day-to-day performance, that can happen through, I hear that here, and we can have, you know, I will obviously offer to sit down with anybody who wants to talk about it. I think shared goals and choosing what those things are, and sort of saying like, is this, there are these the three, five things that we really want to get done this year? I think that'd be a really powerful document. It'd be much more powerful than a gigantic list. But I think it's really hard to do, because you have to say no to some things. And I don't know if the council, you've got 13 people, it's going to be hard to reach consensus on that.
That's totally. Shalini?
We rarely get consensus.
Yeah, I mean, I was also thinking in terms of having many goals and doing little, little, little of 10, 20 different things versus really going deep and getting some things really done. That was one thing, but then I was like, how do we decide? And that's kind of what we, as 13 people, and that's one of the things that's, I've struggled with, you know, is how, as a council, are we prioritizing versus individually? Because it's my waste hauler is mine, therefore that should come before anything else. I mean, I, I, I think we have to find a way, as a group, I feel very proud of the work we've done in waste hauler and where it is. And I didn't push, there was a lot of, for example, suggestions that, oh, it's a very simple bylaw, just pass it. But I knew there were the complexities and the impact it has, and so there's a process of proposing it, because, you know, the regulations require that we propose the full bylaw. And also, we need to get feedback from residents, from RFIs, from all, so there's a process that has to be done. But all that to say that, I think there is a way for us as a group to come up with criteria for prioritizing, such as we've already identified our values in terms of climate, action goals, racial equity, all of that, right? Now, within that, which are the proposals that can start to make an impact with the least amount of resources, like which doesn't require a new staff member, or, you know, like, so that could be one criteria. Like, even within waste hauler, yes, we could do with a new hire, but there are some best practices that can be implemented even without a new hire, right? So, I mean, that's, what I'm trying to say is like, is there a way to put in criteria where the sponsors are sharing that here is how we can have impact in racial equity or in climate change with the least amount of, you know, the maximum impact with least amount of resources? So that could be one criteria.
I just need to note that somewhere around 10:55, Michelle Miller had to leave the meeting. Pat?
I was looking for her, because one of the things that she's in GOL. What? No, it's all right, I'll hold it, thank you. Finally remember to hold it, and it still doesn't work. There's a word I'd like to share. Michelle made a suggestion that we have a retreat to focus on, on what are our goals? And I think that's actually a really good idea, because, and, and for me, the criteria and the actions, because it's the, and I'm almost sitting here thinking, well, I don't agree with, I'm just making this up, with Kathy about such and such. So she and I should work on the action steps for that, you know, some way where we would have to come to some consensus, or Mandy and I, or whatever, I'm really just using an, you know, an imaginary example. You know, whether or not that's something we want to do, and I think this would be best with the full new council, than it would be to, for this body now, although I would hate to lose Anika's voice, I would hate to lose your voice, things like that, so.
Pam?
Thank you, Pat, you took the words out of my mouth. A shared goal session, goal-setting session would be very beneficial, and I think at some point, it would be appropriate to include the town manager in that kind of work session to, I mean, I think we are responsible for setting some of the priorities, but we just had the conversation this evening about, does, does this new initiative take priority over everything else that we've asked the town manager to do for the year? And I think that's the discussion I would love to have. Theoretically, if, if something like streetlight policy had been included as a, as a, like an ECAC goal or something, it was, or objective, it was like, we really need to focus on dark skies. That would have been, for me, a more comfortable way to, you know, because we would have all had to, to vote on that list. And so therefore, I would have put my stamp of approval on that being an, an action item or an objective for the town manager, and it would not have, you know, seemed like, came from, you know, it got priority over something else that, that is on the list. Anyway, sorry about that ramble.
I just, it seems to me that we really would need to find a way to come to consensus, because we don't agree about individual priorities, whether streetlights should come first, or this come first, or, or whatever. And so I, I think, yeah, how do we, how do we do that? I think would be a really valuable experience for all of us.
I guess I need at this point to ask Pat and other members of GL, whether you think you've got enough out of this discussion to proceed?
Nah, yes, actually, I think that we have.
Okay.
Just to act like a grown-up, but I don't feel like that at 11 o'clock at night. Yes, I think we have some, and I also would encourage any counselor or any staff member, Paul, Athena, to send me the other ideas, and I will share those at the next meeting.
Pam, did you still have your hand up, or, okay. Shalini?
I did, because I just thought of another criteria, which I'm forgetting, but it'll come back to me in a minute. But like, in terms of the criteria, one was like, where we can get the maximum benefit with the least amount of resources? And I had another criteria, as you were just talking, that I wanted to share. Okay. I still want to share, okay, if it comes back in a minute, I'll share it now.
All right, we're going to move on. Kathy?
Okay, I, I just have a question, what you want me to do? Because I like the idea of the retreat a lot. I think we have too many goals and we have too many actions. And one of my evaluation comments of the manager is, we gave you Mission Impossible, and you did as much as you could about Mission Impossible. So he, at one point, said someone came into his office and said, you know, six more staff positions, and he said, well, if I can only do one, which one would you choose? And they said six. So I think, you know, I think, so I think the idea of a retreat, if we, if we could come to the four or five biggies and not put, if you had told me, in act, national health care in Amherst, I would have said, don't make that a goal. So we have a few that are, are, are values, they're important values. But I, I don't know what else I can do on the document I have, because I wanted to slim it down all over the place. And if you just want me to redline it, or what? I'm just asking for what I, how I should spend my time.
Pat, do you want people to submit to you suggested changes?
Yes, I do, and if it, redlining works for you, then send me a redlined copy.
Okay, it's a combination of comments sometimes, and take this out with a comment why, okay?
I have already sent each of you the town manager draft evaluation, and asked you use track changes and comments. So we'll do the same thing with the goal document?
Yes, please.
Do you want to, Art, do you want to use the one that we're already starting to trim down? That's the document I was working on. Dated 11/15.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fine. It doesn't, yeah.
All right.
Can I, can I just share it though? I put my hand up again. Oh, the cra, one of the criteria that can be used, I was thinking, was in terms of community feedback. So I might personally, as a counselor, want to put something forward, but then there are other things that many counselors are hearing from the community, like speeding, or even the waste hauler came with a lot of, not just the zero waste, but there was a lot of community push for it. So like, what are the, so that could be one of the, not the only criteria, but that would be one of the criterias, how much of the community is, like, is asking for that?
I'm going to end the conversation, note that Alicia Walker has also left the meeting. The next, there is a motion, it's to refer the town manager evaluation process to the GO, Governance Organization Legislation Committee for a report and recommendation based on the November 20th, 2023 Town Council Discussion by, and I left, we left the date empty.
This is that same, that same problem we had with the, the TSO.
Right.
The town manager one.
Should we just end it with discussion and not put a date on?
What about just April 30? April 30?
April 30.
They could always do it sooner.
Sounds like a good idea, April 30, 2024. Is there a second?
Second, Dublin-Gothier?
Are there any other comments or questions? Shalini, is this about this? Okay, then we'll move to a vote. Yes, comment? Mandy Jo, yes.
So, am I understanding this request for referral appropriately, like, we didn't really have a discussion, per se? Based on what discussion?
We didn't.
You know, because this, this is not a referral of the goals, and it's not a referral of the document we talked about that's already drafted. It's, a couple people mentioned, we need a better process, but we didn't really have a discussion of it.
So maybe it's, we just take that whole piece out, where it says, and say, recommendation by April 30th, 2024.
I, I guess what I want to clarify is, are we aiming to simplify the process, or simplify the document counselors submit, or simplify the memo poll? Like, or all of it? Like, like, which parts are we, since I'm on GOL, I don't know whether I'll be on it in a month, but like, what are we asking GOL to do?
Personally, I think we're asking them to look at the whole process.
Including timelines?
Including timelines, including what the town manager is expected to submit, including whether we have mid-year conversations, including whether or not we simplify a document, et cetera, et cetera. Remember, we, we started having that conversation at one point, and then we never got any further with it. Andy?
Yeah, are we going to have goals for the beginning of the year that the manager's going to work on? And I also need to know that, just because the Finance Committee always assumes that there are going to be goals that we're going to then adopt as the goals that work into the budget guidelines. So a little lost, how is what we're doing?
All right, on the goal issue, at this point, I think there seemed to be a sense, let's try to simplify them. And Pat has said she will accept suggestions from other people by a date certain, and send out a Word document, like the document that's already in your packet dated November 15th, where the GOL already tried to start the process. And that the idea is the GOL still has to come forward with some goals. Yes or no? Pat?
I think that's true, because of what Andy said, so I think, but that, yeah, I think that we need to come up with goals to begin the year with.
Right.
But that, that will, we will, that's the very beginning of a process in which we will review creating those goals in the first place, and how we evaluate the manager. And that would be due sometime in April. Does that make sense?
And also, that much prior to that would be a retreat where the new council would discuss goals and priorities.
Yeah, and if, and depending on how much work we're able to do in GOL, we may be able to present a lot at that, in terms of process, to add that retreat, because, yeah, never mind.
Andy, does that make sense? The answer is yes, we still need to have goals, even if after the new council is seated, further discussion takes place, and maybe there's revision in the goals, recognizing that you can't keep changing them if you want them accomplished.
Yeah, and I'm also going to say that one of the things I need to think about is, how can I trust and collaborate with all of you, not just get my way? And I, that's something I want all of us to think about, about the current goals right now. Yep.
To answer your question, yeah, I think that works. What's most important in the end is that town manager needs to begin work on the budget that he's going to present to us on May 1st, by Janu, you know, very beginning of January, which is why we try and do the guidelines by the end of December. And we just have to accept the fact that we're going to come up with something that is going to allow us to do that, that incorporates the, the goals as Pat described them.
Right.
And if they're adopted by the council, then the two fit together and we go forward.
This is what makes the whole timing so difficult, is the relationship of evaluation to future goals, to financial guidelines, to the budget. And they all fit together in a process. And to decouple one from the other begins to erode the ability to have any continuity. So there is a motion I made, and I think we've modified, and it's to refer the town manager evaluation process to the GOL Committee for a Report and Recommendation by April 30th, 2024. Is there a second?
Second, Dublin-Gothier?
Thank you. Shalini?
One other aspect of the goal setting is to include some kind of measurement of, like, I know there were a lot of examples, if we had so many events, so many trainings, but I wasn't clear what is the impact of those trainings, or how many people are attending them, or even in terms of community events, to have some kind of measure, like, we're doing all these trainings, but how many people are participating, and what is the impact of these? So to include that in the process.
Pam? Okay. Are there any further discussion regarding this motion? Any further changes to the motion? No? All right, then we begin, I guess with myself, Lynn Griesmerz, and I, Mandy Johanne, Anika Lopes.
Hi.
Michelle Miller's absent, Dorothy, Pam.
Yes.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker's absent. Shalini Bellmellon.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Hi.
Anna, Dublin-Gothier.
Hi.
It's unanimous with two counselors absent. The appointments were done, we're going on to, yes.
Can I just ask my question? The comments to Pat on the town manager goals are due to her by when? And then, when do they come back for the council to look at?
They have to come back to the council on the 4th. So Pat? The 29th, so you're going to need to re, by the 27th, Monday. Got a lot of homework. Okay. Pat, could, can, do you have a Word document of them? Of those goals? Okay, Athena, could you send it out and ask people to return comments to Pat? Thank you. Committee liaison report. Committee liaison reports, Mandy Jo?
I guess the only thing I want to say is we're still working on nuisance. But the council may receive some comments regarding a nuisance bylaw draft because we requested that public feedback requests and, and seeking of public feedback be sent to a number of groups and the, the document that was sent said you can email the five counselors that are on the committee or the entire town council. So, so just don't be confused as to where that's coming from, but, but that's what it is. The document, the, the latest draft of nuisance will be in the CRC packet that Athena will post at some point. But the one that they are commenting on is, is in the last CRC packet.
This is a carryover item?
Is it may or may not be a CRC carryover item, depending on how far CRC gets. It will be no matter what, a town council carryover item, because the council won't have time to vote on it, even if it's out of CRC. But it may or may not be out of CRC.
I just was trying to figure out where it was going to fit in the pecking order. And we did get one of those comments. And I did refer it to, I did suggest that people, the person that submitted it, put it into the general public comment. Okay. Elementary school building, Kathy?
It's the same report I gave last time, the next full committee member meeting is the 8th. We did get we're on our way to going before the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. We just haven't quite got the exact dates for that. And we're on our way to starting to dig at the site in, in the early spring. I mean, the first package is due to go out, assuming we hit go over Conservation Commission and Planning Board to get there. So there is a meeting on the 8th.
When does the fence go up? Kathy? When does the fence go up?
I think it goes up right when this, the package goes out in like February, so maybe March, because the first part is moving dirt and prying soil and really preparing the ground. So the physical construction isn't until the summertime. So it's, it's got a two phase. But I think the fence has to be up while they're digging. So, and no one climbs on the equipment that will be there.
Right. That's why I asked. Finance committee, Andy?
I think between the written report and all that you've heard already that you've had the report.
Okay. G O L, Pat?
I have nothing else to add right now.
Jones Library, Anika?
Well, I was out of town in reception last week, so I'm going to call on both Paul and Anna if I could please.
There was no meeting last week.
There was no Jones Library meeting. I can do T S O though.
Sorry.
No, no, Paul, you were fine. I was just.
T S O, Anna?
This is past 11:00 P M humor. Okay, so I'm going to take, which isn't funny. So I'm going to take T S O, T S O worked on the carryover memo for a while. We also started to talk about the the, the two separate processes, one of establishing safety zone criteria and the second of talking about traffic calming at Cushman Scott. We sought feedback from the Transportation Advisory Committee regarding the traffic calming at Cushman Scott. Thank you, Athena, for sending out the speed study data to Tracy today. They are meeting on December 4th. A special thank you to the Chair of TAC for calling that meeting. They were not planning on meeting. And so we appreciate them accommodating our timeline. Sorry, thank you. 30th to, to be ready for our meeting the next week. Thank you. So the other thing about this is that we are separating out, that will not be, those are traffic calming measures and the safety zone criteria will need to be something separate so that we don't accidentally create precedent. We also got updates on waste hauler, which is continuing to press along, but we haven't, they haven't finished reading through and summarizing all of the RFI responses. And then we also talked about Shalini's community engagement proposal, which will be coming back to T S O with a slightly different motion on how to proceed with that moving forward.
Okay. Are there any committee liaison reports? Yes, Dorothy? You're muted.
Okay. CSSJC is having two public forums. One on CREST online forum on the 29th of November at 6:30 to 8:30. And a public forum in person in, at Town Hall on Saturday, the 2nd of December, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. That's it.
Thank you. Paul, anything from town managers?
Nope.
With regard to President's Report, I didn't do one this week. I had something else I was working on. And any future agenda items? Besides the fact that we may get nuisance bylaw? Counselor, counselor comments?
I have one.
Yes.
When you say future agenda items, I, you did a miraculous job for about five meetings or four meetings in a row. And I was sure it was to encourage people to run for council that we could have short, shorter council meetings. So I know agenda management is tough, particularly at the end of the year, but I just have a request, we really try to, if we can't get to things, we just can't get to things. And so our own timeline should be longer. That we shouldn't expect everything to move quite as fast. So that's just a request. I mean, I don't think there was any way of avoiding tonight because we also rightfully opened it up for public, but it looks like the 4th is going to be painful again. So we'll, we'll figure it out.
We'll see. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 11:25.